Ms. Waldo, will you do a roll call for us, please?
Yes ma'am. Mr. Caprow.
Here.
Mr. Landis.
Present.
Mr. Steele.
Here.
Ms. Stickland.
Here.
Ms. Vanmore.
Here.
And Ms. Stewart.
Present.
Thank you.
Will you all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. I'd like to have a motion for the approval of the agenda, please. Ms. Stickland, Mr. Landis. Jim, do you have any?
Oh, yes.
Please vote.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, thank you. Reports.
We have district showcase.
We were just skipping ya! You just were blending in!
Go ahead, Annie. Well, President Sharp, we have with us this evening Karen Seacrest, who's the principal at Stapleton Elementary School, and Jennifer Dozier, the executive director of elementary education. We're excited to have a group of students here tonight.
Yes.
And they came with the parents and grandparents, aunts and uncles, too, I think. So, it's great.
I know, yeah. It's awesome.
Karen's done a fabulous job. This has been our first year as principal at Stapleton, and she's done a fantastic job this year. We've been very pleased with what we've seen, and we're excited to see your students perform tonight. So, I'm going to turn it over to you and let you introduce them.
Okay. I have Mrs. Kathy DeMint, our music teacher that's here this evening, and she is directing our kindergarten students in a couple of songs for you, one especially to say thank you to our Board of Education. So, Mrs. DeMint?
And, parents, feel free to stand up and take a picture. I mean, it's your children.
Yeah.
It will also be broadcast on Jet 14. Several times a month. If you have cable on channel 14, you can see it again.
And it'll be on YouTube, too.
Thank you, Mrs.
Oh, there's a ladybug in my soda. Oh, there's a ladybug in my pot. Oh, here. Oh, there's a ladybug in my soda. Trying to get to the very top. Oh, ladybug, ladybug. Ladybug, ladybug. Ladybug, ladybug. How did you get in there? Oh, there's a ladybug in my pot. There's a ladybug in my shoe. Oh, there's a ladybug in my pot roast. She knows just what to do. Oh, ladybug, ladybug. Oh, ladybug, ladybug. Oh, ladybug, ladybug. How did you get in there? I was having such a bad day. I didn't think it could get worse. Then I sat right down to have a little meal. Instead, I had a great big squeal. Oh, ladybug, ladybug. Oh, ladybug, ladybug. Oh, ladybug, ladybug. How did you get in? Why did you go? How did you get in there? Help me! Thank you for all that you do. You make this feel so special and very lucky. We're glad that you are here. We couldn't do without you, that's the truth. And so, we say that we appreciate you. Yes, we really, 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 really do. Thank you for all that you do. You make us feel so special and very lucky. We're glad that you are here. We couldn't do without you, that's the truth. And so, we say that we appreciate you. Yes, we really, 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 really do. Really, 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 really do. Thank you!
Good job.
Wave to your parents as you leave. Thank you, parents, for coming.
Good job!
You guys were awesome. Thank you for coming tonight.
That was awesome. I was informed that that's not only on Jet 14, but it is also on YouTube. So, anybody that wants to see a repeat performance, try YouTube or Jet 14. Yeah, it is. They did a really, yeah, they did a nice job. Thanks again to Stapleton Kindergarten. That was absolutely awesome. We're moving on to item E, reports. Board President Report. We'd like to move to the staff recognition of our Golden Eagle Awards. And that is for certified staff. And is Ms. Smith here? No, it's here.
She's probably in the hall later. She is here.
All right, Ms. Smith. Ms. Tina Smith calling. Calling Ms. Tina Smith. Would you please explain the Golden Eagle and Golden Wing Awards, please?
Can we sit and explain?
That would be awesome. We're going to recognize the staff recognition.
Yes, okay. Every year, for the Golden Eagle and the Golden Wing Awards, the staff in each building or department have an opportunity to nominate within their building or department, say if it's transportation or food service or that, they have an opportunity to nominate somebody to represent their building for Golden Eagle or Golden Wing. And there are, there will be some buildings, depending on how large they are, that may have two. And, you know, some of them aren't because they're more populated. So, they may have, they may have two, but otherwise, there's one. And then normally, we do, from that, we have a Teacher of the Year Award, and we're going to recognize that person as well. And that person is, is also nominated from the buildings, and we go through an interview process, and, and that person goes on to represent Joplin Schools and the Missouri Department of Education Teacher of the Year in Jefferson City. This year, we also did a Support Staff Person of the Year. We're going to recognize that individual at the next board meeting, so that will be in June. Right, okay. So, we'll do that. Is there, are there questions about anything I didn't go over or I went over too quickly? So, okay. So, anyway, and we have a good turnout, so I just want to thank all of these individuals for coming and letting us recognize them, and I think you're going to call them up and...
Yes. Okay. Mr. Landis, would you help me? Mike McAllister.
This is Administration Building. The wonderful Mike McAllister. Awesome Kelly Price, Administration Building. From our Beacon Building, Laramie Armstrong. And if I mispronounce someone's name, I'm so terribly sorry.
That's the certified, or that's the classified. I'm, wait, yeah. So, that's our para. I'm Elizabeth Amigo. I'm the teacher of Beacon.
Okay, all right. From Buildings and Ground, Roy Stick. You've changed my mind. You are?
Elizabeth Amigo.
We're starting with the classified staff first, Golden Wing. So, we've got them first, so, yeah. A little bit back and forth. There you go. Congratulations.
Is Roy here tonight? Okay, he must be teaching. Buildings and Ground, Terry Thompson. Tina Herman, Cecil Floyd. Angela Turner, Cecil Floyd. Amanda Keller, Columbia. Then we have a winner. Thank you very much. That's awesome. Early Childhood, Claire Miranda with something in the middle. Help me out. Help me out.
Claire, wrong.
Congratulations. East Middle School, Amanda Kent. East Middle School, Fran Ockert. East Moreland, Tammy Decker. Paul Purcell, representing Food Service in the Warehouse. Rosetta Vest, representing Franklin Technology Center and Missouri Southern. From Irving, we have Eric Altman. Nicely done, Mr. Eric. Jefferson, Amy Mann. From Joplin High School, Cheryl Bernie. From Joplin High School, Whitney Stahl. And I know the lovely Kay Johnson is here from Kelsey Norman. Come on down. McKinley, Marty.
How do you say it, Jennifer?
Imicist.
Imicist? North Middle School, Sarah Clevenger. Marina Luna, North Middle School. Royal Heights, Tom Blankenship. Soaring Heights, David Haines. South Middle School, Harry Long. Nice team.
Thank you very much.
Eric Powell, South Middle School. Come on down. Lord is hasty. Stapleton Elementary. Transportation, Bill Hale. We love our transportation department. Representing Transportation again, we have Henry Pullum. Henry is a grandson of Henry, son of Henry Pullum Senior. A loyal Joplin Eagles fan. Joanne Eden, representing West Central. Representing Beacon, we have Elizabeth, but she came up already, correct? All right. You were anxious. Brian Bandy, Cecil Floyd. Come on down. Cecil Floyd, Rihanna Medley. I'm sorry, can we give another round of applause for our Golden Wing Awards? And we have started our Golden Eagle Awards. Janelle Harding, Columbia Elementary School. Proud wife of Matt. Early Childhood, Michael Walters. I said that wrong. Mikel? Okay, help me.
Michelle.
Michelle, okay.
It's Michelle.
I'm so sorry. Michelle Walters, Early Childhood. Brandy Davis, East Middle School. Lovely Brandy, has gotten some sun over the weekend. Amanda Marins, East Middle School. Kylie Garrett, East Moreland Elementary. This is hardly embarrassing at all, walking all the way to the front. Cheryl Fields, Franklin Technology Center. That's awfully quiet for Cheryl Fields.
Hello, everybody!
Thank you for redeeming me. The lovely Kathy Nikodemos from Irving. Is this your first year of teaching?
Woo! First year!
Wow, the bar is high for you! Diane Herman, Jefferson Elementary. Good job, Diane. From Joplin High School, Chris Avoyer, Sharke extraordinary. Joplin High School, Chris Garrett. And what does Mr. Garrett teach? Thank you. Amber Travis, Joplin High School. Social Studies and Volleyball. And my old neighbor, Karen Evans, Kelsey Norman. Cecilia Brown, McKinley. Kathleen Court, North Middle School. Jenny Viesermeyer is doing track this evening. She will not be here. Deanna Yoclee, Royal Heights. Congratulations. Awesome. Soaring Heights, Sherry Crumless. South Middle School, Rebecca Burke and Howard. What's Miss Rebecca teach? Obviously, I didn't do that well. And South Middle School, Daphne Payne. Stapleton Elementary, Dawn Compton. And Dawn teaches?
Second grader.
Second grader. Susannah Watkins, Stapleton. I think she survived my nieces and nephews. And last, but certainly not least, Jennifer Fuller, West Central. It's the longest walk ever. Congratulations. Congratulations to all of our Golden Eagle Award winners. Is Chris Avoyer anywhere in the building? Like to move on to the Superintendent's Report. Thank you all very much for coming this evening. Let's... Ms. Turner? Will you come up to the table a second and tell them that you were going to, what you were going to give to the Teacher of the Year? Oh, okay, never mind. Come back in June?
We'll come back in June.
All right. Always nice to see the foundation. Dr. Huff?
All right. Superintendent's Report, it's a short one this evening. We have a construction update, and I believe we have, it looks like Jason's here and Archie, both with Universal Construction, and Mike gives an update on the high school FTC project.
Okay. So, update on the high school and Franklin Tech project. Moving, starting with the wings, the areas A through A, B, C, D, and E, the arts and science portions, we are at final phase, which is kind of completing the final punch, finishing out the flooring, and performing the punch list. Over the next, over the course of this next coming month, we'll do that, those punch list criteria, get that stuff completed, and turn the facility actually essentially over for owner move-in. We're coordinating with the city to get the TCOs for those spaces, those portions of the building, so that we can begin to turn portions over and sequence in the move-in over the bigger building sooner.
Acronym for TCO?
Temporary Certificate of Occupancy, sorry.
Thank you for the general public.
Sorry. The cafeteria area, Area G, we have, since the last time we met, we were just working on shelling that in. We have since dried that in, with the exception to the receiving dock, which we have temped in because we've got some concrete there that we've got to cure out, so we're temporary in that. And as you start to see us move through the exterior finishes, which are going to start happening really rapidly, that'll be kind of the last area of our sequence after the paving and things, just so that we can keep the progress moving around the site from a, from a, I guess, finish standpoint. On the interior side, the overhead rough-in is taking place. The kitchen B&amp;J, food services, they are started, or they have the walk-in equipment and the kitchen equipment for the culinary arts in lower level, Area E. They'll start on that here in the middle of, probably about two weeks, middle of June, and then they'll just sequence right from there up to Area G and work on the kitchen stuff to kind of sequence out the last of Area G. Moving on to Franklin Tech, just in sequence, coming out of that portion of the building, and then I'll jump back to the gyms. Franklin Tech is stud-framed. We have the interior, I guess, the end wall, rough-in and inspections done. They are installing JIP right now. They're about 75% complete, and I say that, that's PCI. Sorry, I'm echoing there. So, they're hanging the, hanging the JIP, and we're pushing for the next, really, the next three weeks to sequence through the last of the JIP, getting the finishes done, and then moving into paint sequence, so that we could tie out the paint movement right from the JIP to the kind of shop areas or the block areas, if you will, and that will really kind of sequence more into the second week of July, and that'll take us through the month of July to kind of complete Franklin Tech prior to the August, August timeframe. The gyms, which are areas L and K, we have started the overhead dry-falling, which is the painting. We've got the JIP, it's, the JIP is hung about 90, probably 90, 95%, and they're finishing that right now. They'll sequence right from the overhead, kind of the structure painting down the walls, and we're kind of doing some things piecemeal right now while we're getting our central utility plant up and running, so that we can keep things moving. The paint's going to sequence out of the space, and probably in the next two weeks, we're going to close in the last of those walls. The paint's gonna sequence out of the space, and probably in the next two weeks, we're gonna close in the last of those walls and really isolate or box in the gym. And that's gonna be preparation for the wood flooring, which is supposed to deliver around the second, third week of June. By the time we meet again, we'll have gotten the wood flooring for the auxiliary gym in place and start the acclimating process for that, and they'll go right from the auxiliary gym to the large gym and finish the space out. And that, that really takes us right up to that August, August timeframe for the completion. It's the last area in our sequence of really the high school. Excuse me, if I'm going too fast here, stop me. I came in a little quickly. The performing arts, we have set the last of the precast panels, with the exception of one panel, which we've left out for some sequencing in and out for the load-bearing block. That's about two weeks, two weeks from completing, and really will probably coordinate by the end of next week, getting that crane back to set that last panel, which will button up the last of the roofing portions. PCI has started the framework around the perimeter, so that we'll catch them by the time we set that last panel and essentially be ready for the dry-in phase of the performing arts. And we've also been able to jump, jump-start a little bit more of that block in the band orchestra, because we know that that's a focal point to try to get in the August timeframe. We're, we're still, still tracking that that's not gonna happen, but we're pushing every day to try to make that happen.
Have you gained any ground on that particular piece?
We have gained some ground, yes, absolutely. We were, I mean, originally tracking for a November timeframe, it's now in September, and I really, I mean, if things just continue to work, I mean, we're about to that timeframe where we can be closed in and pass that weather part that's holding us up, and fingers crossed, I mean, we'll make as much time as we can each day.
So, will it be finished in time for the fall play?
Now, you're talking about Performing Arts Center itself, we're talking about the classrooms that are attached to it, the band choir. Performing Arts Center will not be done.
It won't be finished.
Probably not for the fall play, no.
There's a nice transition to separate the auditorium with the classrooms, and so right now, we're trying to see if we can't push the classrooms ahead of the auditorium itself. So, the auditorium's still sequencing out where, where we've been tracking toward the end of the year. And again, we're gonna continue to see if we can't make up time on that area as well, but it's, we need everything we can to go right for us right now on, on that portion of the building. From a site standpoint, we've got all of the, the three northeast parking lots in place, and you see we've opened that up for just vehicles, it's just construction traffic, not heavy equipment or tracking across it. It gets us closer to the building and allows us to get the parking off of Grand, so we're not tracking in and out of the mud. And now, we'll start that west phase, which is three phases on the west drives, we're, we're starting that now, we've got the equipment and everything that was staged there out of the way. Weather permitting, we'll have machines out there touching up the fine grade and setting string lines for curbs, which is the first phase of three on the west side. The courtyards will come out right in sequence with it, so we've got the courtyard walls in place between each of the buildings, and we'll start sequencing that heavy-duty paving up to the dock and then the, the last of the walks in and out of the spaces. So, so that when we do get to that July date, we have our egress means, our hard surface walkways in and out of that, those portions of the building. From a ballfield standpoint, you can see we've got the turf down on the soccer field, we've got the majority of the turf down on the football field right now, they're out, they're still, you know, doing the last of the stitching and nailing everything down, sweeping in the rubber. So, things are going really well in the football and soccer portions. We'll get sequencing here on the, the track will probably be the last of the sequence moving out of the, the field portions of it. We'll move to the baseball, softball phase next, and they're actually working on the sub, the drainage course right now on the base. Got our fences set for the tennis courts, which will start kind of our, our sequence for the tensioning cables. A lot of people are interested in seeing when are those pads gonna take place, it's been kind of tied to those fencing guys getting started and anchor fences out there right now, and they've got those installed. You can see kind of taking place, taking shape, the tennis court. So, hopefully in the next week, with some good weather cooperation and other call for rain, but we can start getting the cables down, start tensioning those up, and in the next two weeks, hopefully have our slabs, first of our slabs poured. Our biggest goal over the next, the next month, until we, we present again, is just gonna be finishing up and closing off those pieces of the building that really need to be behind us, those A, B, C, or not A, sorry, D, C, B, and E, the wings, arts and science, so that we can kind of get those off of our list, get a punch list done, turn them over to the district for move-in, and then really focus our efforts toward Franklin Tech finishes and the gym finishes. So, things are still tracking good for our August completion, and we're really pleased with the progress that trades are making each day, big, huge steps. Are there any questions? I know a lot happens each week, so it changes. You start to see the metal panels changing, a lot of you probably saw those on Area B, which is our closest area next to the Performing Arts Auditorium. Those composite panels have started, they had a little bit of a hiccup, but we got the material showing back up this week, so we're really gonna start seeing those exterior finishes closing up the building. The last piece of that that you haven't seen yet is a Swiss pearl, and they're gonna start putting on the sub-framing for that here in the next, next week and a half, so that we can get those panels in.
Are there recruits working around the clock?
No.
Okay.
We're working just, just the day shift.
Okay, okay.
And Saturdays, right now.
The back side of the building, the...
On Grand?
Yeah, the black paneling, is that the permanent exterior? Is it bronze? Okay.
It's kind of, when you're, when you're back a little ways, right now, you can kind of get mixed up between the, the dark bronze, which almost looks black, that's your finished boxer panel, and then, if you're far away, like if you look at the south side of the gym right now, that's just, that's just the vapor, or the air barrier, and it's black, so it kind of, it gets lost between panels, but those will eventually be composite panels, so they'll change that color.
Okay.
Yeah.
I just wasn't sure.
It, the colors change so much.
Changing all the time, but we were just by there today, and I was like, what's that?
Originally, people thought the building was gonna be yellow.
Right, well, that, and why, when I say I asked, I was asked that question today, I mean, my husband asked me. Is it gonna stay yellow? And I go, I don't think so. I don't think so. We're not, we're not keg-a-boo.
Are there any other questions about the high school? I know that was brief, but made great progress. It improves weekly.
How close are we in tying in 24th Street and getting the roads open?
We are, we are there. I mean, we had...
They have the basin paved.
Yeah, we had, we actually stopped. We got the curbs in, and then we had an ADA issue with one of the ramps, so we were working through that with the city, I believe we got that fixed Friday. So, as soon as the weather permits, we'll get back out and start the base and tie in really that 24th Street, get that little parking lot up there in the corner and, and, you know, overlay the Ohio that we still have to do. So, we'll finish that up and really leave the last of the paving to that centerpiece that goes behind the gym.
Any more questions for the construction manager? All right, I think they have a slideshow for us.
That's a good segue. Jeff Gaddis is here to speak to us on behalf of Napold Construction to fill us in on safety room progress.
Yes, sir. Thanks, everybody, for having me, and the introduction speaks more than what I can show you. Right now, we're finishing up some final touches on the first five, I'll go through those, and we're, we're right in the middle of the next four, and we'll be starting the last two this summer. So, that's kind of the brief, I'll give you more of the nuts and bolts of things right now. Cecil Floyd, we've had that CFO for, for Certificate of Occupancy for a few weeks now, probably close to a month on that one. Some final exterior punch list items that we're doing, we've got a couple of canopies that have to go in over the doors this week. We're about 90% completed on the interior and exterior punch list. However, this summer, that, we've got more work to do at those schools, and that's site work. We're actually overlaying that entire parking lot at Cecil Floyd, and part of that is widening the bus loop that's out on the east side, I think that is, I believe it's east. All of that work is gonna happen over the month of June, so, so we'll be in and out of there by the end of, end of the month, in the next month. Also, at every one of the schools that we have under construction, all nine of them that are, or, excuse me, eight of them that are currently under construction right now, we have restroom remodels yet to do. So, Cecil Floyd, all the way on down to, to, let's see, let me go and cheat a little bit here. All the way through Kelsey Norman, we have restroom remodels to do, about 30-plus restrooms at each of these schools, that'll take place over the month of June and July. Final details to work out with, with Mike on, on some final scheduling of that, so more updates on that next month. Stapleton, the CFO is in hand on that one as well, and that building's occupied. The punch list will be completed next week, and with all these punch lists, we'll ask the architect to come back out, do a final check to make sure we've, or the subcontractors have fulfilled their obligation there, so have a final sign-off on that. Exterior work is, will be completed this week, they're, they're installing some handrails, I don't know if you guys went to the, the grand opening, but we unfortunately had to have some temporary handrails in place, those are finally in as of this week, and, and we'll have those painted up by either the end of the week or first thing next week, and that job we'll be able to walk away from, with the exception of the restrooms. McKinley, we also have CFO, Temp, or no, we have CFO on that one as well. We've got canopies that are gonna be going in, unfortunately, kind of a, an issue that we've been working through with one of the contractors to get these canopies, he's got them on three of the jobs, he's finally getting mobilized and doing work now. So, we'll be getting those exterior canopies in. We have the, the summer restroom remodels, and then we're about 90% complete on that punch list as well. All these that I say were 90%, the goal is, is, will be 90% until next week, when school's out, and we'll go put the final touches on some of the paint touch-up that we have to do, just so for next school year, we offer you a nice, clean, finished job. East Moreland, we have temporary CFO over there. One of the obstacles is where that, where that storm shelter is placed is kind of right at the front entry area. And we have to do, this summer, as part of the project, we have to do a pretty wide renovation of the, the main entry point, new ramps and new steps and things like that. And at that same time, we've just got a little dab of concrete last, left to do, starting next week is our kickoff on that. And then, by the middle of the month, we'll have that whole area paved and, and completed as well there. Restroom renovations on, on that project as well, you kind of get the, the over and over on that. Jung, we're, that was the one that we kind of got delayed on, on some changes, and, and we're shooting for that CFO by the end of this week. Just got a couple of issues, we had an early walkthrough where the city had a few concerns to give us a CFO on that, relocating some exit devices and handrail here and there. All that work is, is, the goal is, is to be done with that by Friday, so we can get you a CFO and have that storm room open for, for the public. And that concludes all five of the first phase, as we call them, storm shelters. Moving right into what we called Phase Two. Jefferson Elementary, the brick, I drove by at about six o'clock tonight, the brick's about 99% complete on that storm shelter, I think it came through on one of the slides, it's kind of hard to tell which one's which. The connecting building is what we call it, from the existing school to the FEMA, those footings are underway, and, and we expect to have that slab poured in the next 10 days, which will allow us to go right into load-bearing masonry and structural steel and finish up that brick of that connecting building. The, the roofing is underway currently, as of this week, and, and things are moving very quickly on that, and they've got a, they're gonna move a lot quicker now that school's out, and we can kind of spread our wings a little bit. I don't know if you've driven by Jefferson or Royal Heights, but it's extremely tight on those sides, 15 feet each side of the, the building is what we have to work with on that. Royal Heights, the precast is complete, the, the brick masonry over that precast is about 20%. One of the things that we're doing is, is starting next week with school's out, we'll, we'll pull out our, our job-site fencing, so we can have a little more room to, to get lifts and, and our, our batch plant and everything for load-bearing masonry, so we can make that go faster. That's gonna be about 10 days' worth of brick work. Interior masonry is going on, interior load-bearing, and the connecting link is happening as well right now. Royal Heights, that roof is, is essentially completed on the FEMA shelter, so as soon as our slab force for the connector and the, and the FEMA building itself, we'll have overhead HVAC, electrical and everything going gangbusters on that, just within the next four or five days. So, interior-wise, it's progressing fast, as we're kind of slowed up on the exterior while we wait for school to let out. One of the things that we've got to do is, is we've got to demo the north entry, and you're gonna have a new bus drop-off out there, that's gonna happen very, very quickly, you'll see some, some changes, obviously, that's another task that has to be done over the summer, so as not to disrupt school traffic and, and teachers and things.
Are you talking about Royal Heights or Jefferson?
Royal.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm sorry. They do run together, so. Kelsey Norman, the precast is complete, the brick is completed to scaffolding height all the way around, and they're setting up that scaffolding today. They've got about two weeks' worth of brick work to do to be able to top that out. They're pouring the FEMA slab by the end of the, this week on that, the tie-in slab this week as well. So, so all that tie-in of the, the connecting building and the added classrooms is, is going nicely. We'll have load-bearing masonry start as soon as the brick is completed, so 10 days out, you're gonna see that thing really take shape across the, across the connector there. So, in the next 30 days, we'll have structural steel arriving on that, be able to put the roof on, the connecting building, and classroom addition. Dunaway, Dunaway is the, the smallest scope of any of them, it doesn't have any brick masonry or anything like that, it's just a precast structure. That structure is completed, I drove by that, and they haven't got the crane out of there yet, but it's ready to go. The caulking companies, the joint sealants of those big precasts, that's underway right now, they've grouted all the base plates. The plumbers and electricians are working inside right now, doing all their underground rough-in for, for toilets and power and what have you. And then, by the middle of next week, we'll be grading that side-end building out, getting ready for slab and sidewalks and things like that, so we can wrap that job up real quickly. That goes through Phase Two, okay? West Central and Columbia, we've kind of got those on, on, on side-by-side schedules right now. We have a, we're locked in for a September 1st and a September 15th delivery date for precast, which sounds bad on the surface, but that was negotiated from a November delivery date. So, so we made up, in, in essence, we made up time there, but we're still, we've got a ways to go to get those done. We will be ready for precast on both of those, it's gonna be, we've got a lot of the same subcontractors working from job to job, so we're pushing those subs to, to finish items, and that will be, I guess, if you will, fill-in work to make sure that we're done and ready by September 1st for, for precast. Those jobs are slated to be, well, before I stop that, we've got parking lot work that we have to complete this summer for those jobs, so that we're not disrupting any school traffic in August. So, all of those parking lots will be completed, a dumpster area has to be, a new dumpster pad has to be put in, all that will be ready for school year in, in August. And then, we're projecting an early 2015 completion for those two jobs. That's 11.
And the city sees our plans ahead of time, so they can, it's not a big issue to do the occupancy permits, because they've seen what we're building.
Those were minor issues, you know, that...
Were they on the plans ahead of time?
Oh, yeah, they, they were there, and, and that's, you know, that's, it's a very common thing, without getting in the weeds, but it's easily fixable, and we're fixing it tomorrow.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have a funding question. So, are safe rooms are paid by FEMA, a community block development grant, and local money, or just the two?
On FEMA, we have FEMA grants for the concrete shells of the cipher. For the FEMA allowing... For the FEMA allowances, they pay seventy-five cents on the dollar. And then we get ten percent from the state, is that correct?
Not on the FEMA.
Seventy-five, twenty-five.
Seventy-five, twenty-five on the four oh fours.
So twenty-five percent for us now that what we call tricking them out, like putting the floors in and the basketball goals, things like that. We pay a hundred percent of that.
We do, okay.
Now, we do have a CBDG grant that pays our twenty-five percent match on eight of the safe rooms.
Or that, that's because they were in the tornado area or because they are in CBDG areas that qualify?
They're in areas and we hadn't started on them. And then at the time that the grant was, we received the grant, we couldn't apply it to the high school, for instance, because we'd already broken ground. But we could apply the full grant and it took eight safe rooms to, to use up the allotted.
They're probably not Royal Heights.
You know, I'd have to go back and look. It may have been Royal Heights. It doesn't have to be in it.
Doesn't have to be in the EDR area.
Okay. So what's the total amount we got from CBDG?
Is that three million, Paul?
Two point eight.
Two point eight.
Thank you. Any other questions about safe rooms? Thank you very much.
Thank you all.
Thanks. I inadvertently missed Mr. Darby and his buddy over there for our robotics presentation. Could you come forward? That was my mistake.
Wherever it can run the best. Maybe right here in the middle?
Can you move the chairs and make it go through the middle?
I was teasing, but.
You can run it anywhere.
These guys have been busy today. I think I saw them do a presentation at the Chamber of Commerce today as well. Did a nice job.
Go give us an introduction.
Yeah, we need to know their names. Know their names.
This is the intro. All right.
Would you sit down at the table in front of a mic?
These are my robotics, well, they're my TSA students. And they are presenting about robotics. They're going to be on robotics team next year. They didn't have the opportunity to be in the class this year. Next year, we're going to do the robotics as a class and then also as more of an extracurricular where they do more of the competition-based things that, I think lately we've heard lots of news things about some Kansas City schools qualifying for Worlds. And so, that's kind of what we're looking forward to next year is really going forward and building some mentorships with some industry here locally. As far as those, those industry partners will be able to help these kids with some of the programming and different things that are going to be a learning experience for me also as a teacher. So I'm excited. I think, I think the kids are excited about it too.
TSA stands for?
Technology Student Association.
I just saw this weekend, maybe it was Sunday, SIU, Southern Illinois. They had a bus here with a trailer and it was part of their technology department. And I can't remember now what the title was, but it wasn't, you guys didn't, wasn't something that you guys were participating in or even. Okay, well, I'm sure that they do this kind of stuff, so.
You need to introduce yourself and your friends.
Oh, I'm, I'm Casey Thornton. This is Chase Will Scam and Will Darby. They're both juniors right now. So I get to keep them another year.
You have six students going to Nationals?
We have seven.
Seven. And you're raising funds for that?
Right.
How's that going?
Do you guys want to talk about that?
We are, what, about fifteen hundred dollars away from our seventy-five percent goal. And how much away from?
They have about thirty-five hundred dollars left to raise.
Why do you get to go there?
Because we qualified at state. We placed first in.
Structural engineering.
In structural engineering and parliamentary procedure. And then some of our other students placed first in other events. And we qualified to go to Nationals and those events.
And it's held in Washington DC?
Yes.
And when is that going to be held?
It is June twenty-seventh through July second.
Does your robot do something besides move left and right?
Yeah.
How they do something with?
Well, these, a lot of these we compete with. We have like VEX robotic competitions and they'll have to do certain things.
You all can come up around the table if you want to see what's going on.
But, um. Move. Don't get away from me.
Going after your daughter.
So did you guys design this together? Did you design this together as a team or?
Yeah, as a team, we'll design it and build it and program it to help, to do what it's doing right now. And then as a team, we will drive it in a field to complete the challenge.
Yeah, it kind of varies. It, because you, basically you design your own robot to, I'm going to snag those wires. What you think would be the best efficient design for competition. In other words, how, like this one here, there's a big bucket that you have to carry all these balls in and go up to them and put them into it. And you have to do it in the fastest time possible. So it's basically how you build it and efficiently. And it's also teamwork. Teamwork's a huge factor in it. Sometimes there's robots that take one person. There's other robots that could take three people to do it, so.
So if you're not doing this during class, you're doing it an extracurricular activity after school?
That is how we're going to do it next year.
Trying to get it, trying to get it over the wires, but.
This year, we did it in class. But there is, there's so much learning that needs to take place in class as far as like drivetrain design and gear ratios and then the programming aspect of it, that building the competition robot is going to have to be an extra. They can't fit it in a class, class day because there's so much to learn. So next year, we're going to do it a little bit differently. Just because we, we learned this year that there's just not enough time to, to get all of that education for it and that they need to have to be able to be successful.
Maybe I'm remembering incorrectly. Didn't we do some, was it last year, the underwater?
Oh, the RVs.
About two years ago, we did the underwater robotics. And then we, we hosted our first VEX competition here in January at the eleven, twelve campus. And next year, we're hoping to be able to host at least two competitions here in January and February. About every Saturday in the January to March months, there's competitions that they can go to here in Kansas City, Arkansas areas. So, it's, it's very involved for them.
Did you get any support today from the chamber or anything from those business partners?
I think, I think we brought up some interest and kind of got out there who they were and what they were doing. Because a lot of, a lot of people don't know what our kids do. So it was good for, good for our kids to go to the chamber. And I think it was well-recognized for them.
I think it looks like it.
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Oh, I was just going to say, I think it looks like it works better than the robot that Howard Wallwitz built on Big Bang Theory. I'm just saying.
I agree, Dawn.
Are, are there skill, scholarships, opportunities for this type of class?
You mean for college? Through the VEX program, there are tons of scholarships. And it also kind of connects with the Project Lead the Way program that we're starting next year. So, there are tons of scholarship opportunities through VEX and Project Lead the Way.
SIU, see, the SIU.
We, we have a short video. We don't have to watch it all, but it's, it's a little bit of the competition that they had this year. The first thirty seconds of every match is autonomous, which means the kids programmed their robots to run without controllers. So they did all the computer programming, telling it how far it was going, how many, how many times the wheels turned before it did anything. So they use lots of sensors to get that going. And then the last, I believe it's a minute and forty-five seconds is operator-controlled. So that's the start and stop period there.
Are they going to fight each other now?
No, they don't fight. The kids, the kids have to do a lot of teamwork. They get placed on alliances, so they're always working with another robot during the competition. And it's not always the same robot throughout. So they have to come up with a lot of strategic plans to try and win their matches and get, get ranked better for the final, final matches at the end of the competition.
Is the material already selected and the, the products, the pieces that you make on that? Or is that some, your selection of how you come up with the pieces and parts of this or?
They have to use all VEX products. The acrylic piece, the kids designed and we cut out with our laser engraver at the school. But all the, all the pieces have to be VEX pieces. The only thing they can use is Lexan. It just, it has to be an acrylic-type material that can't shatter.
Is this your class of one annual class? And then they do have like robotics one, robotics two. Like how many years can they take this class?
We have robotics one and two. And one is basically for the build, build-type scenario, learning about that. And then the second class is more about programming.
Look at this one, they're in the big.
Wow, that's so cool.
And now he's stuck. Look, they're going to fight.
Anyways, every year, the competition changes so the kids can't, they have to be strategic in their planning every year. So, they just came out with a new competition for next year. So teams can already start preparing for next year's competitions.
Excellent. That's awesome.
Thank you.
Got to get across that wire now.
Congratulations.
I'm thinking about it. There we go.
Does it have a name?
This one, no. Sometimes we name them if they do weird things.
The kids' goal is to try, if they can raise enough money with TSA, they really want to buy enough of the elementary-style robotics stuff to start at least one elementary school VEX program next year. They're, they've got a lot of work to do to get there as far as.
Thank you for your patience.
All right, that's all I have.
Is there any public comment?
No, there is not already. Thank you.
I'll have a motion for the consent agenda, please.
Can I make a motion that we remove item eleven and item twenty-two I and twenty-two J, please?
Yep.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Kubrow, second by Ms. Still. Any questions on the consent agenda?
I have questions, just a few. On the.
Made a vote on it first, a motion, don't we?
To remove the other items first because there's not a motion about the, about the consent agenda yet.
And you voted on removing those one items.
Yes.
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 Yes. Then we need to vote on the consent agenda then. I'll make a motion, will you accept the consent agenda?
It changes.
What changes, yeah.
Does that mean we don't discuss?
We, we make a motion first and a second, then we discuss, then we take a vote.
Okay, thank you.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Landis and second by Ms. Stiklen. Please vote.
Yes.
Yes. Wait.
No.
We need to discuss.
We'll discuss.
We'll discuss.
Okay. I reject that.
We'll discuss.
Go ahead. Any questions?
Now's the time to ask questions? Okay, all right, good. I just had just a couple of things that I didn't have a chance to ask before we got here. On, I think it's the furniture bid. And Jason, you might be the person to answer this one. It's number thirteen. I just was a little confused after reading it. So, we're moving furniture from eleven, twelve.
Yes.
Until FEMA makes a decision on whether we get to keep that because they paid for it or?
No, what, we are moving it because that's two-year-old furniture. We, we originally had planned on purchasing all-new. But we, we have to get into the schools and use furniture. So, since there's only furniture that exists for half a school, everything at the nine, ten center is old and borrowed. So, we're purchasing new for all the nine, ten. We're moving over what we did purchase after the storm because we needed furniture. And so even though we originally bought it as temporary, it looks like it will be permanent.
Thank you. That's kind of what I thought, but I want to make sure he's understanding correctly. The other one is on the temporary lease renewals. Oh, number thirty-seven on my paper. Thirty, thirty-six on the new paper. So when I looked at the attachment to it, it had directions or things written by three or four of the buildings, but three of the buildings didn't have anything written by it. And that was the PIC building where we've been practicing baseball. And MoDOT and North Park Mall. So where are we at on those since there's no detail on the paper on those? And is that a Mike question or?
I'll take that.
That's a Paul question.
And Mike, Mike is going to, well, the whole team is going to work toward areas that we're going to walk away from and, and which would be all these that have mobile units. Mike will be writing up specifications to, for FEMA as to say what we're going to do to restore that where the mobiles are at. Basically disconnect the utilities. And then FEMA will come in behind us and sweep those mobile units out. Something like where Franklin Tech's at and North Park Mall. We have a large restoration project to do inside those buildings, which is what we're doing at East Crossroads right now with a contractor to put it back like it was before we rented it. And then after we finish, again, FEMA will come in and remove their assets on the properties. MoDOT, that's in discussion with MoDOT right now in negotiations. So there's nothing been decided yet. The current lease goes through July fourteen. And PIC is the baseball practice space down on Illinois. If we have no more need for that after this month, we'll probably just, at, at least we'll expire as of May one, so.
Then the last question I had was on the health insurance and dental care. It's number forty on this one. I didn't see anything on health insurance there. It was more business-type insurance. So when do we rebid health insurance is just my question.
Health insurance is going to, we're going to study next year with the full implementation of the Affordable Care Act. We're going to take next year to do a broad-based study on what our insurance options and different kinds of coverages might be to see if our model of partially self-funded plan is a good model to stay with or to move to another model. But that'll probably take place next fall and early winter. And then we'll go out and bring on, either reaffirm what we have or bring on a replacement product. And that'll be a broad-based committee working on that. Is that how you see it, Dr. Hutter?
Yes, sir.
Is that fall fourteen, Paul?
Fall fourteen.
All right, thank you.
Yeah, a question on item seven. Policy update, this is second reading for the facility name and public solicitations. Is this, today's the second time we've talked about that? I thought this was the first time we address those policies.
We basically put the policies on the discussion, the work session as discussion as a first reading, and then put them on the consent agenda. Given that there would, if, if we had sufficient discussion during the work discussion, that those could actually be approved as a, as a second reading on the consent agenda. It's not unlike, sometimes we will put a policy on if there's, if it's a clear-cut change and maybe it's an update, you know, maybe a law is, is updated and we're revising our policy to keep up with, you know, recent changes in legislation, then we'll put on consent agenda first and final reading. It's similar to that. We, we just opened it up for discussion during the work session and then put it on for second reading during the.
So the first reading was at five-thirty and the second reading is at eight-fifteen, I guess, basically?
That is right. Yeah, and, and MSBA, their, their guidance is when we talk about how we place policies, that when you have a policy committee, it doesn't require even the second reading. You know, they say there's a, there's a past practice of, you know, it's kind of been a longstanding thing, I guess, where districts feel like they have to stretch their policy approvals out over two months of board meetings. When that's actually not the case when you have a policy committee that includes board members that you. that you can condense that time because it's getting that review at the district level and then it's getting that review with the policy committee and then it comes to the full board.
And is that what our policy says?
I don't, I will check that it does say that, but that is the guidance that I got from MSBA.
Well, I know we adopted their policies in general, so I would assume. Because it used to be like about three readings and I... Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
And you can pass something on, you can...
Right, do you do an emergency... First and final, we've done that in the past.
Well, the urgency behind this one is simply we've got Tablary ready to hit the ground running. We've got people asking and facilities naming committee that's been working since, I can't remember. I want to say January, February. Got the recommendation together, just a timing thing.
So the final reading, that'll be next month?
No, the final reading is, no.
Second and final.
Second and second, okay, so it goes.
So if there's any questions about that, any clarification from work session, that'd be done.
Yeah. Basically, all we did was adjust them to adapt to include policy regarding gifts to the district. So it pretty much was the same as before.
Any questions?
Yes.
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 Yes. Yes. Thank you.
Director Agenda, accounts payable, Mr. Barr.
Thank you, President Sharp. The attached bill lists items for payment of materials, equipment, services, salaries, and benefits in both instructional and support areas. The administration recommends the board approve payment of bills the amount of $17,683,073.91.
Say it.
Mr. Still.
Mr. Still, Mr. Landis. Any questions about account payable? Please vote, oh, excuse me.
Oh, sorry. I just noticed, Paul, that general accounting is higher at the end of the month, but daily checks are higher at the beginning of the month. Is that just a this-month thing or is that just how it usually works out?
It's all function of what's come in at the time we cut off the cycle. So when that comes in, that's gonna be, I mean, we're ordering goods and services all the time and then the vendors are performing and they're giving us their bills. So it's just what's in the door at the time we're cutting off the budget. Payroll runs pretty evenly. I know there's a $400,000 difference on one payroll set, but that cutoff is right after one of our bi-weekly payrolls. So we saw the $400,000 difference.
Right. Okay, thank you.
Please vote.
Yes.
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 Yes, I have another item for municipal advisor. We appreciate the participation of the Board of Education Committees, Facilities, and Finance over recent months in talking about this activity leading up to meeting our short-term borrowing needs and longer-term borrowing. And I'll go into some detail on those and would encourage discussion. As I said, we talked about it most recently at length, last board meetings last week, committee meetings, and at work session prior to this. But this is a effort to, because of the way that we are the so-called financing our rebuild projects, we're the first payer for everything. SEMA is going to reimburse us on projects, 10% of a project at the very end of all projects. FEMA reimburses 25% as we go. It may take, with their questions, and some of these payments are quite complex. So it might take three or four months for them to process our request for reimbursement and to get paid. And I have one project that we've been working with our professional services team in Mike Johnson's office that we're getting ready to turn over to FEMA. That's, they haven't received an upgrade in the project that they have on their books yet, but they will by the end of next month. Those are, those short-term needs due to timing where we're the so-called bank, but we expect reimbursements. Part of this effort to finance is based on the one-year need for financing for those timing issues. The second reason for financing is to deal with expanded scope projects of our rebuild activities at the three sites. The, one of the expanded scope items is, has to do with unforeseen site conditions, which is a construction term for something like mining operations that we've had to deal with at the high school site and work around those. That was unforeseen by the administration to, and the cost of that is at $5.4 million. Another reason for expanded scope items is to, the, what someone called one of our meetings and might as well as type approach, while we're in here trying to build these buildings and meet the community expectations with all the resources we can muster, insurance, donations, taxpayer-approved bond issue, FEMA, SEMA, and our balances, while we're there so that we don't tear up construction that if it's only six months or nine months old or a year old as we might receive naming rights monies or other monies within the next year, two, or three to pay for some of these items, such as lights at multiple athletic fields, artificial turf at multiple athletic fields that will save, be offset in a reasonably short amount of time by operating costs Mike Johnson can provide. Expanded tennis courts going from four before the storm to eight, which I believe Athletic Director Starkweather presented some meetings ago about how we will be able then to qualify for conference matches and perform, have conference finals, that sort of thing.
Practice.
And not have to drive across town for practice. What's another, the track at the high school. Again, our track teams practice daily, having to get in a bus and return back from Jung to practice, so.
And they practice with their middle school kids.
And practice with middle school kids. So those, that's just a sampling of the items that the project was expanded to over the last year or so, that our revenues, even though we did go out after the bond issue and obtained, grew our revenues to take care of a lot of additional needs that we didn't have in sight at the very, very front end. We're still short this seven to eight million dollars with some contingency put in there to get the project finished for unforeseen things that we're not even aware of today. That might be spread over 20 years with an early payback provision, say at five years, if we can work that in to where we can make non-penalty early payments and start really paying that down after five years. But it may be set up so we can afford the principal and interest payments over 20 years. That's a, those two items there are the purpose of the recommendation to request to hire a municipal advisor. George K. Baum, who we've worked with for a number of years, both on bond issues and other financial advisory capacities, is being recommended for this service to work with us, nail down our cash flow needs with the finance office, and prepare a request for proposal to send out to financial institutions to see who wants to help meet our short-term and longer-term needs at the best interest rate possible. And in doing so, I'll modify the municipal advisor write-up and insert that we would bring back to the board meeting the results of this RFP, request for proposal, at the July 22 meeting. And the cost of professional services for George K. Baum would be, for the short-term financing, $20,000. And for the longer-term financing, .375% is what we negotiated with the firm to perform the longer-term financing. That'd be times whatever that amount is, with a minimum for that longer-term financing of $25,000. But again, all this will be brought back to the board at the July 22 for action with the scheduled closing date of the end of July. And as we get this, the numbers come into focus over the next three or four weeks. We'll be updating the board as we go. So I would say the administration does recommend the board approve the contract negotiation and engagement of George K. Baum and company to issue an RFP to meet district financial planning needs.
So move.
Second. Motion made by Mr. Landis, second by Ms. Stickler.
Questions? I have a question. When you bring the RFP back on July 22, will they go ahead and be doing the work between now and July 22?
Yes.
Okay, because it wouldn't be done if we...
With this action, the seat of Dr. Fort, the work will begin immediately.
And then the 20,000 and the 25, approximately 25,000, how will we pay that, the Baum fee? Does that get put into...
That could be rolled into the financing like some lenders do on a home or that could be paid separately and apart, or we could go partial, partial.
And so we'll know that on July 22?
We'll know all that July 22 and, yes.
Please vote.
Yes, yes.
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 Mr. Barr, just the Joplin Schools Foundation just wanted you to just do a brief recap that they have received donation money and placed it where it was supposed to go.
That's correct, President Sharp. The, actually, this was correctly listed on Secretary Waldo's agenda as an info item. And it was, on the item itself, it says action item, but I would correct that to say info item as I just read the highlights here for the board. And will require no action nor no vote as an info item. But since the tornado, the foundation stepped up and really helped us out, received numerous contributions for various rebuilding projects. Of course, we didn't have that in mind at the time, but donations were coming in and donors were making, you know, designations with those donations. And some were not making any designation, so we had some of both. The foundation has been a custodian of those funds since that time and asked us to submit a payment request at a point in time we need the funds to process and pay out to contractors for rebuilding. So the attached list is our payment request of funds that have been held by the foundation since the tornado. And they reflect, most of those are referencing Operation Rising Eagle. I think in the fall of '11, Dr. Huff, somewhere in there, we shifted gears from immediate tornado needs to started asking donors to consider Operation Rising Eagle, our building projects that we knew were coming. So that's what Operation Rising Eagle refers to, our rebuild projects at the three sites. And the listings there are how they came in with donor designations that we're going to honor, that top-line either general contributions of 615,000 or just contributions that the donor would allow us to use anywhere without a designation. So the total, $2,824,533.05 is being requested of the foundation to pay to Joplin Schools to pay over to builders at this time.
Thank you very much. And Mr. Barr did that as a request from the Joplin Schools Foundation. We usually don't explain information items.
I think it's also important to recognize the fact that Joplin Schools Foundation has taken on a tremendous burden over the course of the last three years, taking on those additional donations and tracking and managing those. And Paul, and we're working with the foundation and Lynn Hemp, and in particular, on the foundation side has done a fantastic job of making all that come together. So appreciate the work.
Well, and Community Development, Kim Van Hert department have been really the district's right arm in connecting with the foundation to track all this, send all the thank yous. And so it's been a good combined effort.
Thank you.
Regular into Joplin High School audiovisual.
Okay, actually, Kalista's here. And we're gonna talk a little bit, there was a question earlier today about the AV package and what that looks like. EDA, that's another source of funding, which stands for Economic Development Administration funding. And it's additional funding that we were able to receive through the Economic Development Administration to support some of the programming at FTC. So I'm gonna have Kalista visit with you a little bit about the AV package in particular as part of that. And Steve Reed's here. Steve, would you mind joining us up here? You've gotten off the hook. Oh, no, I wanna, there's some EDA funding that's gonna be used also in addition to AV funding to support some additional programming at FTC that's really exciting as well. And let him share with you kind of some of the thoughts behind some of the purchases we'll be able to make with the EDA funds. You thought you were gonna get off the hook tonight, so.
Well, I think it's appropriate that we're both here because the grant is going to fund key pieces in both of our departments. The one that you're seeing that is going to the board tonight is for the audiovisual package for both Joplin High School and Franklin Tech. We're recognizing that as one building there. And this is going to cover a large quantity of our technology pieces, not the computers and that sort of things, but like the video productions program. That's also being expanded and they're going to have an audio productions program. Part of this and part of the reason why we've got just the AV package in front of you tonight is because with that new course of study, we, we're still developing it on the Franklin Tech side. And so we needed to make sure we had the audiovisual pieces in the school ready to go for the first day of school in August. And whenever they're still developing their courses in Franklin Tech, and it's becoming like the students, and correct me if I'm wrong, Steve, the students are taking some introductory courses this year and then that would lead into the new courses the second year. So it's not as crucial that they have that equipment in August. So that part will be coming back later. You're going to see things in this action item that will include microphones and cabling straight to the Franklin Tech Center. One big thing that Steve showed us, was it two board meetings ago maybe where they did the Next Top Chef?
Yeah.
So that's a week-long project and we physically brought in the cameras there. Now it's going, everything is going to be wired straight in so that if our students want to do that kind of thing more regularly, they could. And so that's, you know, that's a big, a big piece for our community.
So wait, so it's gonna be hardwired into the building, into the facility? Is that what you're saying?
Yes, and just bring their cameras and equip them, just plug into the walls at that point.
It will go straight back to Jet 14.
Instead of having the court, like I'm looking at Danny, he's like...
So the same thing in some of the athletic areas. So that's a huge benefit for, in some of the athletic areas. That's a huge thing for our students that are in the video productions program courses because they're gonna have that experience of shooting live footage and broadcasting it that they would not have, they might get that in college. But they're going to be able to have that as high schoolers. And that is going to make a big difference as to what they can do whenever they do follow through with that field of study. Another piece that's going to be very critical for Franklin Tech is an audio enhancement system that's going to reinforce the sound system in those shop classes. So I don't know if you guys have ever been to Franklin Tech, I'm sure you have, but anytime I go out into the shop area where they're doing A-Bac or Body, the part on the cars, I'm sorry, I'm technology, I don't know. So whenever they're doing... So whenever they're, whenever they're doing those things, the teachers have to yell. And I heard it, you know, it's so that they can project their voice over that machinery and that, all of that equipment. So there'll be a sound reinforcement system installed there so that way the students can hear without the teacher having to yell. So.
What's the total grant amount?
For the AV package, it is, the EDA gives us a grant of $3 million. And our match is $750,000.
Makes it a 20-80 grant, 750, $3 million, EDA.
And how much does tech get out of that?
I don't know what the total package is.
I think...
I was going to say the package that's in front of you with the AV is the 2.489 million. But with that, we are keeping all of the pieces that Franklin Tech had put into that as, you know, their equipment needs, that could be technology-related. So whenever they're looking at welding booths and, you know, paint booths, that sort of thing, that would be directly on the Franklin Tech side in the enhancement grant.
And is our TV production class and program under Franklin Tech?
It is.
Yeah, we did that.
Yeah. It's just never been housed there or...
It wasn't housed there at the old facilities.
Just, I guess, on paper, basically.
Will it at the new facility?
It's obsolete.
Well, we have Franklin Tech programming kind of scattered throughout anyway.
We do.
We're scattered throughout. It's never been set up where sending schools could participate in the TV productions. It's just Joplin students.
So now will sending schools get to participate in TV production since it's...
Not that I'm aware of. There's not enough seats, I don't think.
We filled it up.
Joplin fills it up pretty quick.
Well, most of them have their own programs.
No, nobody else has that.
Not to this extent.
Not to your, no, not to the same extent.
I, I do think that the video productions classes that Franklin Tech offers is probably your highest demand, and that's why they're able, they're growing it to include more classes through that new course of study.
Okay, I have a question with all of this. Will there be, when we get into, when it's all done, and we have all this fabulous technology at the high school with all, with this grant and everything, will that affect the quality of the production that comes over Jet fourteen? Because I know when you watch it on YouTube, it's a different quality, the production quality's not the same, or is that out of our hands?
It's, you know what, that'd be a good question for Danny to answer, but let me tell you what I think. Because part of that could be lost a little bit in the communications there, and it depends on where that video is coming from. This is going to allow us to put all the cabling straight into the areas where we're recording, similar to how Danny's doing tonight with the board meeting. So, and they're going to be using hi-def whenever they do this. So there is less opportunity for quality to be lost because there's, there's less transfer with them having the cabling straight into the area that they're recording.
He's giving you a nod. So, yeah, sounds good. You're doing great. So it should be, when we're watching it at home on Jet fourteen, that the programs that, that the video production program puts together, they should, we should see a difference in the quality, of the production quality on television then, right?
For the ones that are being recorded there. So let's say, in my classroom, I used to throw up the video camera and record my kids all the time with, you know, a two-hundred-dollar camera. And then I would give the videos to Danny and he would play them. But the quality that I could get with a two-hundred-dollar camera, just walking around with it in my hand, is completely different from what we are getting tonight.
Right. Okay, awesome. May I have a motion?
I, I think I have a question, and I might be totally off. The discussion that I heard, is this when I'm supposed to talk, or are we supposed to do something else first? Okay.
So maybe...
Yeah, discussion.
Okay. Coming from my perspective, out of my other job, is this the grant that I thought was going to provide, like, training for adults and students in, what did I hear, EMT and nursing and stuff like that, or is that some other grant, and I've gotten confused?
That was some of the items that was written up originally when we proposed it, to have diesel programs and other items that was in there. Some of those items got taken out as far as space and size of the facility kept growing bigger and bigger and bigger.
And so then is this a grant, then, then we can go back and modify? Is that what we did, or...
Well, the grant did have modifications because whenever we originally were looking at this, we were looking at a very narrow scope. I know the HVAC was one piece that we wanted to look at with that. And honestly, I can't tell you what, what pieces were involved in that, other than I know that there was some discussion of it. And the EDA has, they are, they dot their i's and they cross their t's, and they, we had to turn in a great deal of documentation to support all of this, and some of the things that we wanted to do, they said no. And in addition to that, before we could go forward with anything, we had to have the EDA's approval. So let's say that we'd already put out a bid on HVAC, and I don't even know if it's that way, let's say if we had, and then we said, well, we want to use the EDA grant to pay for that, we wouldn't have been given permission by EDA because they had to look at the bid package, they had to look at, I mean, all of this...
We had, we had to follow federal requirement guidelines related to that. It's, it was a lengthy, and my hats off to Kalista and Dave and Steve and everybody that, you know, that took that project on. It was a huge undertaking, and, and anytime you deal with federal dollars at the federal level that comes by way of EDA or CDBG or any other funding source, there's a lot of scrutiny that goes into that. So in fact, I think we just got our final approval today with relation to the bid packages themselves. So was it, is that correct?
It was, because we wanted to provide this to you as an information, and right before the board meeting started, just a few hours, we got permission from EDA to go ahead and seek...
And we've been working on EDA time, which is different than our timeline, and, you know, they're, like Kalista said, they dot their i's. We would like to brought this several months ago, and, you know, they've, they've asked a lot of good questions, and we've submitted, resubmitted, and then the final approval came today, and we didn't think we were going to get it today. In fact, we were talking this morning or this afternoon about having, having maybe an emergency board meeting between now and the next board meeting since we got the approval. That was a big celebration internally because it's been a long time coming.
Okay, so that means then now you're saying this is good to go, this is not a, this is a given?
Yep, on approval tonight, we move forward and we get, we get going, make, place the orders, and hopefully have all the equipment in for install, or at least a big part of it for the install for the new high school.
So what are we doing with the other one-point-two-five million?
I don't have a clue. I wasn't on the initial meetings, and we dreamed of all the stuff we wanted to add and bring on, and then...
I believe, I believe the balance is going to go to Franklin Tech programs. I don't know, Jason, are you very close to what Dave's put in that package beyond?
Yeah, I think in some of those things that Pepper discussed, it's, it's programs that are developing, but, but there's not enrollment numbers now to support the program. So the urgency that we, or urgency forms not the same as what's with the EDA package.
One of the things, I think I can give the example, diesel technology, that was brought up, and, you know, we don't, we don't have the space for diesel tech program, we're not sure we have the demand at this point, and so what we're doing is purchasing some diesel equipment, some, some lifts and things of that nature to run diesel. Kids are going to get exposure to heavy, heavy equipment opportunities as well as, as diesel, working on diesel machinery and doing the maintenance and upgrades and upkeep of the, of the diesel machinery. And John Rutledge is going to run that side of the program, but that's, that's one example. We're going, we're going to be purchasing some diesel equipment, lifts and other things that can serve multiple purposes, so kids get a kind of a cross-section of exposure to some different, different potential career paths.
So will we just hold on to the difference until that need arises, or how does that take place?
This isn't a year long, I get what the span was.
We have until, I think that we have to put out the bids for the rest of the equipment by March.
Fifteen.
And, and then that has to be ready to go, and I, I want to say by the following August, so we do have one school year there. But the way that the EDA releases the money isn't necessarily like they'll give it all to us at one time. Bailey Sten is our grants coordinator, she has been doing a great job keeping in front of this and has been working with Steve and Dave and I to make sure that we've, we've got everything we need and ready to go with that. And so she will be looking at how the EDA does release their funds so that we can purchase that equipment.
Nice thing, though, too, is that waiting a year, you know, next spring, we'll have a better sense of where we are at that point in time programmatically, and if we want to make some changes or shifts in the FTC program based on demand at that point, we have a better sense of where we're headed, then we can utilize those dollars at that point in time.
Well, no, we, didn't we just articulate agreements with Crowder and Southern? And so can this grant money kind of help move us toward that direction where the students are going to come out of high school with maybe an associate or at least with some hours toward a degree at one of those two?
That, that'll happen regardless, but there's some things like, you know, I'm just thinking, for example, innovative technologies program that we'll have at FTC, which is going to be an ever-changing based on the demands of the industry at that time. So you're going to see things like wind energy and solar energy type things, so there's an opportunity for some equipment there if need be, you know, alternative energies, bio, biofuels.
The collaboration with Crowder, because they're maybe teaching some of those classes out of those programs, out of the classrooms. And you'll be seeing things all summer long come through on bid packages that we're buying for those programs.
Thanks. Mike Landis made a motion, we need a second, please.
Second.
Randy Steele. Please vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Hi.
Yay.
Discussion items.
I just have the one, want to thank the gentleman that provided their hot rods to take our kids with disabilities to the prom. They had an excellent night, and I want to thank that group of men that furnished hot rods to take our kiddos to the prom. It was very exciting, and just a shout out to those guys, and they're going to do it again next year.
Was it a group, or what was...
It's a group of hot rod fathers.
Just called hot rods?
I'm not sure what the group was called.
Was it the Bob Dads?
So, it was just, it was just guys that had hot rods, and one of the father, Will Darby's father, Ron Darby, called them and said, will you guys furnish your hot rods and escort these guys to prom?
Cool.
Certainly want to congratulate the class of 2014. A great graduation ceremony was the other, about a week ago, and graduated four-hundred-and-thirty-one students. We have a number of students that are scheduled to graduate this summer, so we'll be planning a graduation ceremony of sorts sometime this summer, which we've done in years past, which is a nice thing. And then also, let's not forget, and Jason, you may have, or Jennifer may have more details related to summer school. Summer school enrollment is happening now and starts, first day of summer school is June fourth. So we'll be hosting summer school, K-12, this, this summer, and touch base with your, your school principal or secretary, and then point in the right direction if you want to get enrolled. And our website, obviously, www.joplinschools.org.
And Nick Yuhas qualified for all-state, all-state recognition, finished eighth in the state in country, in golf, sorry, country, I forgot what I was going to call it, country club, in golf.
Country club golf.
Country club golf. It's a new sport.
And we still have athletics going on, we have several...
Yeah, what's going on with track?
They're going to state as well.
Awesome.
Tennis, probably going to state as well.
Excellent.
So, awesome. You didn't mention that Joplin Schools was second in our conference overall sporting events, sport athletics.
Really?
Yep.
We're going to take out Kickapoo next year. As we get that yellow off the high school. Take them out.
Need a motion to go to closed session, please?
Don't move.
Second. Randy Steele and Jim Kimbrough, please vote.
Yes.
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 Thank you.